Yesurane, Baya Padade Naan Unakku Thunai Seegire Yesurane, Baya Padade Naan Unakku Thunai Seegire Enthu Unaita Andavare Ummai Endandun Naan Nambuve
Kathrudeya Parishutta Namathuke Mahimie Undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Esaya Thirkkadarsana Pustagam 44 Madigaram Mudal Moondru Vasanangalai Oru Visai Vasipoom
Prophetical Book of Isaiah Chapter Forty-Four Verses One to Three
Ippudum Indhasanagi Yakobee Naan Terindukonda Isravelae Keel Unne Undakkinavareum Taayin Karpattil Unne Uruvakkinavareum Unekku Thunaisseegaravarma Ie Kattasolkiridhavadi Indhasanagi Yakobee Naan Terindukonda Yesurane Baya Padade Daagamulavaregamel Tanneeriyum Varandanelatinnel Aargaleyum Uthuvain Un Sandadinnel Naaviyum Un Sandhanasinnel Naasirvathayum Uthuvain
Kathrudeya Parishutta Namathuke Mahimie Undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Inge, Indha Moondru Vasanangalil Oru Periya Alamana, Deviigemana Anubavate Kathrud Sutikattiraa
There is a deep divine godly mystery in these three verses
Inge, Devun Tanudiyae Pilligaludiyae Sandadihalukke Kodukkakuriah Aasirvadam Alahaga Chollapatturukaradu
Here, The blessing which the Lord is giving for his generation is written here
Anaal, Indha Aasirvadastepetukollae Oru Devunude Pillai, Indha Stanaathukku Veyertappadavendubandbadiyum Indha Kaale Velile Naam Vilengikolavendiyathe Avasayam
But this morning, It is needful for us to understand as to what state a child of God should rise up to receive this blessing
Indhasanagi Yakobee
My servant Jacob
Naan Terindukonda Isravelae
My Israel whom I have chosen
Naan Terindukonda Yesurane
And my Yesurane whom I have chosen
Nee Baya Padade, Indhu Kathrud Peshinar
The Lord speaks saying, "Do not fear"
Unne Undakkinavare Naan, Unne Uruvakkinavare Naan Unakkuthunaisseegaravare Naan, Indhu Avanodu Peshinar
For, As I, the Lord, have made thee and formed thee, and I will help thee," he spoke to them like this
Un Sandadinnel Mele En Naaviyayum, Un Sandhanasinnel En Aasirvadatiyum Uthuvain, Indhu Kathrud Peshinar
The Lord spoke saying that, "I will pour what my spirit upon thy seed and my blessing upon the offspring"
Kathrudeya Parishutta Namathuke Mahimie Undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Ah, Yesurane Indhal Yaar
Who is Chashurane?
Yesurane Kuddevan Enna Seegaradu
What does the Lord do for Chashurane?
Yaar Indha Yesurane?
Who is this Chashurane?
Ah, Ivigale Kurithu Naam Indha Kaale Velile Vilengikondal, Namakkenalamayadu
It will be good that if we should understand these things
Kathrudeya Parishutta Namathuke Mahimie Undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Mudalavudu Vasanathile, Indhasanagi Yakobee, Indhu Avar Alaykedar
In the first verse, He is calling saying, "Oh Jacob, my servant"
Adhey Manidane, Naan Terindukonda Isravelae, Indhu Devan Alaykedar
And that same man He calls as Israel whom I have chosen
Mudalavudu, Oru Manidane Devunude Dhasanai Maravendiyathe Avasayam
Firstly, A man of God should become a servant of God
Devunukku Orutthan Ullianaga, Servantaga, Velekkaranaga, Avan Dhasanaga Maravendiyathe Avasayam
It is needful for a man of God should to first become a servant of God
Indhu Ulakathile Naam Palakariyangelile Veleyatkala Ageneemikappatturakalam
We have been all then as laborers to many things of the world
Chilla Kompanigalile Naam Velekkaralaga Irakkalam
We have found those laborers in many companies
Arasaluvulakalile Naam Velekkaralaga Irakkalam
We have found those laborers in
Chilla Manidharil, Tanipattam Manidharilukke Naam Veleyatkala Ageneemikappatturakalam
And we are laborers to individual men
Anaal, Innake Anegar Palavidamana Vallamigalukke Kuda, Avakal Veleyatkala Ageneemikappatturukalam Adundha Vallamigalukke Kullipodindhu, Avagale Panindhu Vanangi, Avagalekku Dhasaralaga Jivikiravulum Undu
And today we find many of them are found as laborers to even spirits, and they are even serving them for like this
Anaal Ivigalukke Mathile Kathrud Chollukaradu, Nee Indhasan Indhu Avanay Mukkippaduthukaradu
But in the midst of all this, the Lord says that he is his servant
Een Avanay Indhasan Indhu Avar Peshavendam
Why does the Lord speak to him as my servant?
Avan Oru Kaalathile Tanne Kuritha Arikkedumbuludhe, Naan Esavukke Dhasan Indhu Tanne Arimukupaduthukaradu
Firstly, When he is confessing that he is telling that he is a servant to Esau
Naam Manidharilukke Dhasaralaga Irakkukkudadu
We should not be servants to men
Manidharilukke Adimegalaga Irakkukkudadu
We should not be slaves to men
Ah, Yelitinnpara Karamaga Chilla Veleyatkala Ageneemikappatturukalam, Anaal Adimitana Aviile Naam Kattapatturukkukkudadu
We could be laborers in a little manner, but we should not be bound by the spirit of slavery
Oru Devunude Pilligalum Indha Naatkaliile Devunude Dhasaralaga Matthappadavendiyathe Avasayam
Every child of God, they should be changed as the servant of God
Mosseye Kuritha Andavare Peshumbuludhe, Avan Indhasan Indhu Peshinar
When about Moses, God is speaking, He is saying, "He is my servant"
Thaviidhe Kurithu Peshumbuludhe, Avan Indhasan Indhu Peshinar
When speaking about David, He says that he is my servant
Thalebe Kurithu Peshumbuludhe, Avan Indhasan Indhu Kathrud Peshinar
When speaking about Caleb, God says that he is my servant
Vedathile Anegar Barakkramasaligal Undu
There are many valiant people in the word of God
Vallame Ullavaregal Undu
There are powerful people
Vedam Chilleray Njani, Indhu Alaykuturukaradu
And some of them, the word of God calls us wise people
Anaal Enni Parthu, Oru Chilleray Maatharame Vedam Dhasan Indhu Alaykedar
But when counting each of them, only a few are called by the word of God as my servant
Esuvaikuda, Idho Naan Terindukonda, En Dhasan, Naan Adarikkar, En Dhasan, Indhu Thirkkadarsana Vaialaga Andavare Avare Kurithu Peshinar
Even about Jesus as a prophetical word, God says that he is my servant whom I have chosen
Anaal Yakobee Tanne Kurithu Adiyagamam, 32 Madigaram, 5 Daavasanathile Tanudiyanannanudathle Aalareepi Cholivudumbuludhe, Ummudiyadhasanagi Yakobee Idai Chonnan, Idai Koduttan, Indhu Chollungalindhu Tanne Manidaneke Dhasanaga Vediipadithinan
In Genesis Chapter Thirty-Two Verses Five, When he is meeting his brother, he is telling, "Go and say that to my lord that I am his servant"
Een Indhal Avan Veley Seedadu Allame, Ulakapragaramana Aasirvadangalay Edirbarthu Maatharame
Because he was serving everything in the world expecting worldly blessings
Ningal Indha Markathukule Vanda Pindu, Ulakakariyangelikkamaatharam Ningal Kristuvay Pinbaccinall, Ningal Paridabikkappattakavaregal, Indhu Vedam Sutikattukaradu
If you should follow Christ and for these little blessings of this world alone there, you are the spread than all men
Oru Van Immaikaga Kristuvay Pinbattuwananall, Avan Paridabikkappattakavan
If one should follow Christ just for this worldly matters, then he is most miserable
Anavidinaal Naam Immaikaga Alle, Namakki Immaikuriyadu Kariyangelaitara, Avan Ummai Ullavaraaga Vallamay Ullavaraaga Irakkaradu
Therefore, Not only for the present world and things of this world, he is able to provide everything
Avanukke, Eppudi Oru Manidaneke Poitani Dhasan Indhu Cholla Mudiyum, Ivigalukke Mathile Andavare Avanay Dhasanaga Alaykum Mudiaga Avar Virimbinadu
How can he go and call himself as a servant to men? In the midst of all this, God wanted to call him as his servant
Adukkaanunam, Avan Indhu Ulakathile, Ulakakariyangelikkaka Than Avan Ulliam Seedavandha
The reason for this is, he served the world only for the material things
Avanudiy Ulliyate Kurithu, Hosea 12 Madigaram, 12 Vasanathile Thirkkadarsana Vaialaga Hosea Chollumbuludhe, Oru Pennukkaaga Ulliam Seedan, Isravel Oru Pennukkaaga Adumaitan, Indhu Migum Kullitaramana Vaartegal Ubayukupaduthappatturukaradu
Reading in Hosea Chapter Twelve Verses Twelve, He says that Jacob, he served for a wife
Oru Pennukkaaga Ulliam Seedan
He served for a girl
Oru Pennukkaaga Yelvardam Ulliam Seedan
He served for seven years for a girl
Ah, Adut Innoor Pennukkaaga Yelvarsham Ulliam Seedan
And nextly, For another girl, he served for seven years
Adhum Pennukkaagathan Avan Adumaitan
And for that purpose, he kept the sheep
Ah, Naam Ennu Ulliam Seegaradu
What ministry are we doing?
Indhu Ulakathile Kaarkaga Ulliam Seegarama?
Are we serving this world for the car?
Veetukkaaga Ulliam Seegarama?
Or for the house?
Elavuttal Nelathukkaaga Ulliam Seegarama?
Or are we serving for land?
Elavuttal Vasidi Vaipugalukkaaga Ulliam Seegarama?
Or are we serving for facilities?
Nee Devunude Dhasana, Manidhanude Dhasana, Elavuttal Indhu Ulakapurulude Dhasana?
Are you a servant of God, or servant of man, or servant of the worldly things?
Orarathile Vivagam Peshappattadu
In one place, This book about a wedding
Ah, Andha Payanta Neen Enna, Onak Enna Venunkelu, Enna Venunkelu, Neen Elaarun Kettikittairnaga
They were asking the boy as to what he wants
Avan Vande, Onnu Venan, Ninga Kodukkaraadu Kodunga, Kodukkaraadu Kodunga, Neen Solitupoyittairnaga
He was telling, "Just you can give what you want to give," and he just went on
Engagement Varum Muddinjichche
And engagement was over
Ah, Engagement, Andha Ponnooradu Sitthapavandhar
And the small father of that girl came
Ah, Taniyakootu Boye
And he called, invited him alone
Tambi Ninga Cheeridu Cheynga Cheynga, Neen Soladu Neen, Ninga Urimiyooda Kellunga, Adinchanadu
And the brother, you do not say that you do what you want, you ask of your own what you want
Adu Vareki Teliva Arindha Andha Payan, Adukparu Muttalamaridha
And he who was clear until that time became a fool
Ah, Ivaga Teliva Kellunga, Varavala Ninga Kekkaraadu Urimiyooda Kekkala, Ena Ongeluktham Fixpanitamla, Apdillan Jonavani Avan Namby Boye, Oru Listyadutthu Anipita
And when they said, "You ask on your own what you want," because it's determined for you, he made a list and he sent
Ah, Inna 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 Ittunna Elaita
He wrote as to these items he wanted
Avange Edirbarthu Allan Minju Poyich
And it exceeded all the expectations
Ah, Indha Postu Payan, Andha Ponnooradu Appaavukke Kerachadu
And this list went and reached the father
Avar Adut Lettrupotar
And he wrote the next letter
Neen En Pennoodu Aalapoguraya, Naan Kodukum Puruloodu Aalapoguraya
Are you going to live with the girl, or you're going to live with the things which I give you?
Copy to Chief Pastor
And he wrote a copy to the chief pastor
Copy to Center Pastor
Wrote a copy to the center pastor
Adu Hosea, Ellargan Copy to the government office La Porramari Potanipita
And he wrote a copy like this, he wrote a letter, government letter
Avuketta Question, Enna Driima, En Pennoodu Aalapoguraya, Naan Kodukum Puruloodu Aalapoguraya
The question that he asked is, "I'm going to live with my girl or with the things which I'll give you?"
Ah, Anuketta Kellvi Correcttha
It was a good question he asked
Ah, Trippiyum Anniupketa, Ipanda Ponnooradu Tham Aalra
And finally, He asked for forgiveness and he's living with a girl
Ah, Avan Jonav, Indha Sitthapavanna, Idukka Naam Puttilamasinchita
And what my uncle has done, I have done it foolishly, he said
Ah, Innake Anegar Walkai Kuda, Indhu Ulakathile, Mattka Purulukke Dhasaralaga, Panathukke Dhasaralaga Tham, Walkai Amake, Anegar Sitthangolukaradu
Even today, People of this world are wanting to determine their lives and becoming a slave to the things of this world
Ah, Anaal Kathrud Ivanay, Tanudiyadhasanai Maath, Avar Sitthangondar
But it was the will of God to turn him as his servant
Oru Pennukkaaga 14, 7 Varsham, Innoor Pennukkaaga, Innoor 7 Varsham, Oru Pennukke Dhasanaga Erindavanay, Innoor Vidathile Chollaponal, Tanudiyanannanukke Dhasanaga, Tanne Arimukupadithinavanay, Kathrud Tanudiyadhasan Indhu Alaykum Mudiaga Avar Virimbinadu
He who worked as a slave for a girl for seven years, and in the next angle, he who was a servant to his brother, the Lord wanted to make him his servant
Dhasan Indhu Ado Oru Subject
Servant is another subject
Adetave Padumuludhe Naam Parikala
And when it's needful, we can learn about it
Anaal Yakobee Kathrud Indhadathile, Ennude Dhasan Indhu Avar Alaykavirimbinadu
But the Lord wanted to call this Jacob as my servant
Mudalavudu Ningal Devunude Ulliyargal, Velekkaralaga Ningal Ugalay Matthungay
Firstly, You should change yourself as the servant of God
Ulakathile Ningal Yaarukko Oru Velekkaralaga Neemikappatturukalam, Adukkurithu Naan Nin Poludhu Peshavirumbavallay
You might have been appointed as servants in the world, but I do not want to speak about that
Anaal Parlohom Unne Parthu, Tanudiyave Velekkaranindhu Cholluma
But will the heaven look into you and say that you are a servant?
Devan Tanudiyave Velekkaranindhu Unne Cholluvara
Will God call you as his servant?
Unne Kurithu Tanudiyave Velekkaranindhu Avar Cholluvara
Will he call you as his servant?
Ah, Priyamalve, Indhasanagi Yakobee, Indhu Avanay Alaykatar
He is calling as, "Oh Jacob, my servant"
Yakobee Indhu Sonnal, Enna Artham?
What is the meaning of Jacob?
Thatti Viltugaravan, Indhu Artham
One who is demolishing things
Avanukke Urothama, Enna Soonala Vandal, Ada Thatti Viltirav
Whatever comes against him, he will demolish it
Adu Enna Technicalanall, Use Panva
He will use every technique for it
Ah, Avanukke, Adaputti, Mattavanga Enna Thukkupaduvaangangaradu, Adaputti Avanukke Kavaleyakadu
He will not be grieved as to what the others are grieved about
Avanudiyayeen, Thaanndiyay Lifele Vande, Ezumame Kurukkakudadu, Oru Sportive Mindoda, Morikittairva
He with a sportive mind, he will move and he will destroy everything, he will not bother about others
Avanudiyam Mindle, Andha Blessing Tham
In his mind was the blessing
Adu Tham Avan Mindle Odikittairuk
Only that was running in his mind
Mattavant Thukkupaduvaane, Aluvaane, Namayavapurthana Panitthaa Avayavela Vedaanappaduva, Andha Mindala, Avanukke Vande Chadist Mind Avanukke
Others will be grieved and they will be worried, he will not be worried about that because he was sadist
Ah, Avanudiyam Mindle Vande, Annan Thukkupaduva, Avan Yerkunave, Seestaputrapagata Edutachi
Already, He has got the first born, first share, and therefore, he will not think as his brother's greed
Ah, Yerkunave Seestaputrapagata, Rettipana Banga Vangeachi
Already, He has got the double portion of the first born, and he's got it from a brother
Ipapakaiti Aasirvadatiyum Pudingita
And he has got the last blessing too
Avan Aluvaane
That he'll cry
Avan Thukkupaduvaane
He'll be grieved
Avan Kovaapaduvaane
He'll get angry
Avan Pinmaruvaane
And he backs light
Avan Enna Seeva
What will he do?
Adalna, Mattavunudiyadukkam Vedaana, Ivanku Mindle, Outpanadu, Thaan Aasirvadikapanna, Idu Mindle Tham Avan Mindle Odikittair
Others' griefs or worries will not hurt him at all, he should be blessed only that was going on in his mind
Ah, Parunga, Avan Vande Ukandha, Aluvaan, 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 Enak Aasirvadavenu, Anaal Avanudhi Kovaam Mulusiigum Bakant Virumbeech
The brother is coming crying, holy, that he wants the blessing, and therefore, his anger totally turned towards him
Namusolradu Esapinmaripoyita, Kanani Estriyakattitupoyita, Avan Sabayavutti Veelyapoyita, Karunayenna, Indha Yakobee Ponne Shatta Tham
We see that Esau was backslidden, and he went and married a Canaanite, the reason for this is because of the things which Jacob had done
Ah, Avan Chenge, Ivanchenge Thavala Tham Avan Thadumarna
Because of his mistake, he stumbled
Yappodumey Aavikuriyasindhyodu Oru Kariyate Kannoookunkal, Ulak Aasirvadatin Kannoookathodu Oru Kariyate Ningal Edupadathurunkal
Always look to everything with a spiritual mind and do not interfere everything in the worldly angle
Unne Neesi Pothu Bola, Ni Pranen Neesi, Ni Unne Neesi Pothu Bola, Ni Pranen Neesi Payaka
As you love yourself, you love your neighbor
Mattavanga Onak Enna, Enne Seenu, Ni Aasapadariyo, Adha Ni Mattavunku Ni Se
What you expect others to do unto you, you do to the others
Mattavanga Onak Ganamanunu, Ni Mattavangal Ganaman
When you want the others to honor you, you honor the others
Mattavanga Thukkupaduranga, Vedaanappaduranga, Chaapadama Kadukkaraanga, Alugiranga, Adaputtila Ivangalakal, Ivanukke Aasirvadavayinam, Adu Ondu Tham Ivan Mindle, Adhey Aasirvad, Adhey Mindle Tham Byitturuka, Immaikaga Ni Kristuvay Pinbaccukaray
He is not grieved as to whether the others are not eating, or grieved, or crying, or fasting, he is not bothered about all that, you are following Christ only for material things
Idu Tham Yakobude First Stage
This is the first change of Jacob
Ah, Ipududu Ivana Kathrud Change Panar
But now the Lord is changing him
Ipapavantar Endavudhu Peshinar, Indhasanagi Yakobee, Indhu Solitte, Naan Terindukonda Isravelae Keel, Adinpeshinar
Now, The Lord is speaking to him the second time, firstly, He is saying, "Oh Jacob, my servant," and secondly, He says, "An Israel whom I have chosen"
Ah, Ipududu Avanay Terindukondavanaga Kathrud Matthinadu
Now, The Lord is making it as a chosen
Oru Vele Indha Markathukule Ninga Varudukam Vandal, Yakobaga Irundurukalam
Maybe before you are coming into this religion, you might have been like Jacob
Vanda Putidil Kuda Ningal Yakobaga Irundurukalam
Even after coming newly, you would be a Jacob
Vanda Chilla Varudungal Kuda Ningal Yakobaga Irundurukalam
Even after coming for a few years, you might have been a Jacob
Avan Andha Thagupan Veetavutti Pohumbuludhe Yakobaga Irindha
When he left his father's house, he was Jacob
20 Varsham Maamanar Veetlar Na, Angayum Yakobaga Irindha
For twenty years, he was in his father-in-law's house, there he was a Jacob
Idilindhu Enna Vilengikolukaradu
What do we understand from this?
Ratchikapadukkum Munbaga Naam Yakobu, Ratchikapattappinbum Yakobu
After, Before being saved, we are Jacob, even after being saved, we are Jacob
Ethniyoo, Ethniyoo Varudangal, Naam Yakobagaave Valandavurukaradu
For many years together, we are living like Jacob
Ah, Ipududu Kathrud Ivanay Electpana, Adavudhe Terindukulla Arambitha
But now, The Lord is choosing him
Een Indhal Avarukke Ivan Tham Terindukulla Patta Sandadhi
Because he is only the chosen generation for him
Eenadha Abrahamakadutthu Kathrud Isakka Kuntavirukaradu
Because after Abraham, God brought Isaac
Isakka Kadutthu Esau Yakobu Tham Nikkaran
After Isaac stands Esau on Jacob
Esavay Verutthandhu Yerkunave Already Andavare Soli Mutshtadu
And the Lord has already said that he hates Esau
Ipap Ivana Tham Clear Panavendiyaradu
Now, He has to clear him
Ah, Ivana Ipudiyay Yakobavacha, Ivana Vechi Entha Buryajnemukkada
If he has to be placed as Jacob alone, there's no use with him
Adal, Kathrud Ivanay Change Panradu Kaka, Ivanay Terindukondar
Because the Lord wanted to change him, the Lord chose him
Een Terindukulukaradu
Why is he choosing?
Devunude Terindukulududiyadragasyam Enna?
What is the secret of the Lord's choice?
Yoan 15, 16 Anga Enne Chollapatturukaradu
Was a stole there
Neengal Enne Terindukulavallai, Naan Ungalay Terindukondain, Karunam, Ningal Kanigoduukumbadiyaga
He have not chosen me, but I have chosen you, that you might bring forth the fruit
Devunude Thittathinbadi, Devanamit Terindukonda
According to the plan of God, the Lord is choosing us
Neengal Enne Terindukulavallai, Naan Ungalay Terindukondain
He have not chosen me, but I have chosen you
Ah, Neengal Poi Kanigoduukumbadike, Ungal Kanik, Nelithurukumbadike, Naan Ungalay Eerpadithinain
That he should go and bring forth fruit, and that your fruit should remain, I have chosen you
Yakobaga Irunkaravarekyo, Avanukku La Kanigoduukkare Chiviyam Ille
As long as he was Jacob, there was not a fruit-bearing life
Ah, Avan Mindle Mulusum, Pengalaga Veerindadu
His mind was fully with girls
Avan Mind Fulla, Kholandegalaga Veerindadu
His mind was full of children
Avan Mind Fulla, Adugalaga Veerindadu
His mind was full of sheep
Avan Mind Fulla, Vanchikaradu Vaerindadu
His mind was full of deception
Avan Mind Fulla, Aasirvadathukaka, Yavunay Amatha, Avar Rediyaidu
He was wanting to deceive any man just for blessing
Annanay Amatha Redi
He was able to deceive his brother
Appava Amatha Redi
He was ready to deceive his father
Adut Maamanay Amathadukre Redi
He was ready to deceive his father-in-law
Avanudiy Mind Vande, Aasirvadandhavatavara, Veeriduumeyakada
In his mind was only the blessing and not anything else
Spiritula Vanditapparagu, Ni Maamsuttha Adal, Navakya Kudadu
After coming to a spiritual angle, you should not connect carnality
Sabai Kulla Vanditapparagu, Indhu Ulak Aasirvadangalukka Agni Alugiradu, Kanirbaduradu Allaa Irundha, Ni Immaikuriyadu Oru Nabat
After coming to the church for the material things of this world, if you're going to cry, then you are man who are after the world
Kathrud Ipududu Ivanay Sandhitthu, Terindukondappattavanai, Maachavirimbinadu
But now, The Lord met him and wanted to choose him
Apput Terindukulumuludhe Ivan Yakobaga Irkamudiyaadu
Then when he is a chosen person, he cannot be like Jacob
Adukparagavam YakobunJonav, Indha Markathila Avan Bible Thukittalay, Chilla Buryajnagada
If he is called as Jacob, there's no use, then he carrying the Bible out in this religion
Adu Navidinaal Kathrud Enna Bonnar, Avanat Terindukondavanaga Matthumuludhe Isravelaga Avanay Undu Vanay Arambitha
Therefore, When the Lord wanted to make him a chosen person, he changed him as Israel
Indhadathila Tham Avanudiy Life Change Agaradu
It is in this point that his life changed
Ah, Kathrud Namit Terindukulla Virumbukaradu
The Lord wants to choose us
Ah, Paulay Terindukulumuludhe Kathrud Soladu, Ivan Terind, Naan Terindukonda Paatharadu
When the Lord chose, then Paul, he says that he is a chosen vessel
Ennekakathrud Ivanay Terindukondaro, Anneke Ivan Life Marinadu
Whenever he chose him, that his life changed
Adu Varei Parishutthavangali Tumbappaduthukudiyavana Agaradu
Until then, he was persecuting the same
Sabayay Tumbappaduthukaravana Agaradu
He was persecuting the church
Arayyappodu Avanay Terindukondapatharamindhu Kathrud Uchcharitara, Adukpinbu, Ivundelife Mottamma Marivuttha
But from the day, the Lord said that he is a chosen vessel, and to me, then his life still totally changed
Devan Terindukondavanmeal Kuttamchatthukaravan Yaar
Who is the one who is accusing, the one who is chosen of the Lord
Romans 11:5, Devan Kirbainaale Namit Terindukonda
Romans Chapter Eleven Verses Five, we see that he is chosen as by the election of grace
Andavare Ungalayum Enne, Indha Sabayla Konduvandhu, Indha Markathila Abhishekam, Devan Terindukondan, Ragasyame, Naam Kanigoduukakkudelai, Marvend
The secret of choosing you and I in the church, and keeping us in the churches, that we might be fruitful
Ipududu Terindukondavudane, Ivanay Pairsolli Alaykumuludhe, Avanudiy Pera Maath, Isravel Indhu Chollukaradu
Now, After he is choosing, he is calling and changing his name as Israel
Ivunukke Redun Nera, Kathrud Israel Israel Nu Pera Vachadu
The Lord named him as Israel two times
Adiyagamam 32:28
Genesis Chapter Thirty-Two Verses Twenty-Eight
Adiyagamam 35:10
Genesis Chapter Thirty-Five Verses Ten
Indha Redun Edathiliyum Kathrud Soladu, Naan Unne Isravelinde, Enimevavom Pera Maathra
And the Lord here, in two places, he says that he can call him as Israel
Mudalavudu, Yakapooku, Indha Nadhin Karaila Kathrud Avanay Sandhitthar
Firstly, The Lord met him in the shore of the river Jepak
Ah, Yakapooku, Indha Oru Aachin Karaila Avanay Sandhitthar
The Lord met him in the shore of the river Jepak
Avan Aasirvadathukaka Poradina
He was striving for blessings
Avan, Andhanarthri Avan Vaiala Vandal, Enna Tham, Enna Tham, Aasirvadana
Even at that time, the word which came out of his mouth is blessing
Avan Thukkintirukkumbothu Elipiti, Ennan Ketta, Enak Aasirvadavenu
When he is sleeping, if you should wake him and ask him what he wants, he will ask for blessings
Avan Mind Vande Fulla, Indha Ulak Aasirvadathliye Naranjupoyikaradu
His mind was full of blessings of this world
Ah, Ninga Adi Adukaga Jabuchittairukingla
Are you still keeping on praying like this?
Ulak Aasirvadukkaavijabuchittairukingla
Are you praying for the worldly blessings?
Ah, Adukaga Jabuchittairukingla
Are you praying for these blessings?
Ah, Innake, Namalungala, Enne Orupadi Poii, Loan Kedakaradukaga Jabiki Solra
And our people are going even ahead of one step and asking to pray for loan
Aasirvadukke Jabathu Vutittae, Loan Kedakaradukaga Ubavasun Jabam
And they are
Adukku Ulliyakaranagandhu Narathatanu Jabath
They are leaving the blessings, and finally, praying, fasting and praying for the loan, and the servant of God should come and pray
Orunoor Kayalutthupotte, Yel Fileatuitvaraa, Idha Jabinga, Eppudiavudhe, Andha Manager, Kangalla, Jaiukkada, Parloos, Devan Kangalla, Entha, Ha, Ipap Ingvanittae, Eppudiavudhe, Kettu, Naan, Kadan Vanginam
He is keeping on some files and saying, "You pray for this, somehow I have to receive the loan, should find favor in the eyes of that manager"
Avan Devunude Thudan, Aasirvadikka Mudiya Villai
And the Lord could not, and the angels of God could not bless him
Ipakathrud Avantapaya Thudan Solra, Om Pera First Naam Mattra
Now, The Lord says that firstly, I will change your name
Ah, Ipududu, Innay Unudiy Payer, Isravelinde Alaykappadu
Now, Your name will be called as Israel
Ipududu, Avan Devanoodum Poradinaan, Manidhanoodum Poradinaan
Now, He is strove with God and with man
Idu Vareka Manishinoodum Poradnava, Ipap Yaravam Poradararmista, Devanudathilum Poradukaravani Marinadu
Now, He who wrestled with man is now wrestling with God also
Annanay Amathiyachay, Mamaavay Amathiyachay, Appava Amathiyachay, Ipay Yara Amathunbanagara
He deceived
Ah, Ulliyakaranagay Amathunbanagara, Andavare Amathalaman, Pakruthukke Bitto Pootikittairukaradu
He deceived his brother, he deceived his father, he deceived his father-in-law, now he is wanting to put on bits that he might deceive the sons of God of God
Naan Aasirvadipen, Anan Niyukunjam Maran
But the Lord said, "I will bless you, but you should change"
Isravelai Ni Maran
You should change as Israel
Ah, Israel Naenartham, Manidhanoodum, Devanoodum Poradi, Jeethu Edutthukollubaban
Israel means one who has wrestled with man and God, and overcome and taken it
Ah, Ipududha Avanudelifele, Poradi, Jabathulla Poradra, Oru Practice Avanukke Kedaitadu
Now, He got a practice of wrestling in prayer
Mundilamab, Jabathulla Poradradu
Before, He is not wrestling in prayer
Yakobunude Walkaile, Jabathulla Poradnaanakada Remba Technicala Thadidhey Veyitairva
In the life of Jacob, we cannot see that he is wrestling in prayer, but he is technically just knocking out
Koala Kudupan, Seestaputrapagata Edutruva
He will give the porridge and take the firstborn
Oru Atumayarukkambliyathikupoduva, Appava Amathirva
He will put on the blanket of sheep, and then he will cheat his father
Kuti Bodumuludhe, Andha Atuk Munala, Koleyavettivettipote, Abdi, Kuti Elan, Tanudiyad Designukkondundurva
When the sheep is giving birth, he will put on the leaves and branches, and he will take his part
Ipap Konja Spiritula Marirukaradu
Now, He's become a little spiritual
Enna Konja Spiritual Ennede?
What is that little spiritual?
Jabichchi, Enimele, Edavudukariyate Saadikenu
Now, He has to pray and get over certain things
Adukparagavam Avanudiy Prayer Lifele, Konchuk Devaupundan
And after that, he developed his prayer life
Ah, Kathrudeya Parishutta Namathuke Mahimie Undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Adiyagamam 35:10, Kathrud Solitari, Eenime, Onak Yakobungra Paire, Kedaidu, Eenimele, Un Payer, Isravel, Indhu Valangiyay Agavendun Jonav
In Genesis Chapter Thirty-Five Verses Ten, the Lord says, "Thy name shall no more be called as Jacob, but only Israel"
Vaseyengal Adiyagamam 35:10
Ipududu Un Paire Yakob, Inee Un Paire Yakobena Padamal, Isravelindhu Unakku Paire Valangumindhu Soli
Yerkunave, Nyanasanathal Kuruthitarla, Yakapooka, Chankari, Israelun Solitarla, Ipap Trippiyum Kurukkardu Karunayana, Nyanasanay Edutthi, Elavuta, Aasirvadam Betti, Payer Mariyam, Spavam Maravilai
Already, At baptism, and that broke, Jepak, he was named as Jacob, as Israel, but his character is not changed
Ah, Adu Paire Mariichche
His name is changed
Anan Enne Life Marala
But his life has not changed
Adal, Kathrud Ipam Marubidi Avantapesharadu, Eenimele, Om Paire Yakobun, Talapaley Paire Use Panada
Therefore, the Lord again speaks to him, saying, "Do not use the name as Jacob"
Eenimele, Unudiy Paire Isravel Indhu Valanga Vendam
And hereafter, your name should be called as Israel
Ah, Parunga, Andavare, Andha Thittathinbadi, Patthingna, Innake, Israelangra Paire Tham Nikkiddu
If, See, according to the plan of God, only the name of Israel is lasting
12 Triads Names Were Coming On Yakobunude Paire Konjanala Vandukittairnada
And for some days, the name of Jacob came
12 Kothrathu Pairegal Vandadu
And after that, the name of 12 Triads
Chiriba, Andha Pairegalallam Maranjii, Yudha Kothra Mattu, Ninnadu
And lastly, only the tribe of Judas just stood as his name
Ipai Israel Vandha, Ninnittair
Now, after that, is the name of Israel standing
Ah, Priyamalve, Nyanasan Edhatal Mattum Bodaadu, Abhishekam Batrabhatum Bodaadu, Walkai Matthappadavendiyathe Avasayam
Not sufficient, you are baptized, and you are named in another name, but your life should change
Ipap Avantapesharadu, Naan Unne Undakkinay
Now, The Lord speaks that I have formed thee
Oru Kholanday Undakuvaday Kandbikkaradu
It shows that a child is being formed
Ah, Andavare Tham Namay Uruva Undakkinavan
It is the Lord who is forming us
Ah, Avar Tham Namay Make Panradu
It is the Lord who is creating us
Ah, Namada Avar Tham Namay Undakkinavan
It is the Lord who is forming us
Adut Enseeradu
Nextly, What does he do?
Ah, Undakkinay, Undaki, Apdi Alinge Boradala, Karuvilay Alindubogura, Anegak Kholandegalay Parkalam
We see that many children, which are dead even from the womb, not like that
Ah, Karuvilay Alindubogura, Anegak Kholandegalay Namboomiile Parkamudhi
We can see many children, which are dying even in the womb
Ah, Anaal, Kathrud Namay Uruva Karambittha
But if the Lord, the Lord is creating us
Indha Undakkudal Enbadu, Rakshipay Kandbikkaradu
This forming show is a salvation
Uruva Kudal Enbadu, Abhishekatin Molamaga, Namay Divius Spavungalukke, Pangulavala, Kathrud Matthurukkare Kandbikkaradu
This creating is showing that we are partakes of his divine nature through the Holy Spirit
Undakkinavarna Maker, Uruvakkinavarna Formpanra, Meetpanra, Avadi, Namay Arumayaga, Yelumbu, Narumbu, Ipudhey, Oru Arumiyano, Oru Saridamay, Namay Uruvak
One who has formed as a maker, and he is doing, creating everything, everybody and spirit
Ah, Namudiy Chiviathile, Avar Undakkinavara, Adut Uruvakkinavara, Vediipadukaradu
He is in our life, is the one who is forming and one is creating
Ah, Idu Tham Devan Namakke Chigare, Oru Kariyam
This is the thing which the Lord does for us
Ah, Indhikinamil, Ettena Veer Yakobaga, Indha Kuttalale Ukandarukaram
Today, How many of us are seated in this meeting?
Namil Ettena Veer, Isravelagay, Indha Kuttalale Ukandarukaram
How many of us are seated in this meeting as Israel?
Ah, Ipududha Andavare Enne Solradu, Driima
Now, What does the Lord say?
Unakke Thay, Thunaisseegaravarma Ie Kathrud Solukaradavadu
Either Lord which helps you says
Ah, Kathrud Unakku Thunaisseegaradu
The Lord is helping
Kathrud Oru Manidaneke Thunaisseegavittal, Avan Nikkamudiyaadu
If the Lord does not help a man, he cannot stand
Ah, Kathrud Enakku Thunaisseegaradu Solradu, Karangalavettu, Oru Allele Soline
Yay
Ah, Oru Aavikuriyamanishanukke Devan Thunaisseegaradu
Oh, For a spiritual man of God, the Lord is helping
Ah, 1 Samuel 14 Ah, 45, the people are saying that the Lord was with Jonathan, and he is helping us Ah, Devan Namakke Thunaisseegaradu
The Lord is helping us
Ah, Oru Periyay Uthagathila Nikkambuludhe
When they are standing in a great battle
Uthathile Solvi Enbadu, Thirumanikappattapindu
When there was a defeat which was proclaimed
Kathrud Andhadathile Thunaisseedu, Avale Jaike Vittan
The Lord is helping them and is drawing a great salvation
Devan Namakke Thunaisseedhal, Endavuru Vallamayum, Ada Edukkathadukkam Mudiyaadu
If the Lord should be helping us, there should no power of taking it
12 Madigaram 18
1 Chronicles Chapter Twelve Verses Eighteen
Thaviidukke Kathrud Thunaisseegaradu
We see that God helped David
Ah, Devunude Pilligal Yaarlalakarangalo, Avarulukke Avar Thunaisseegaravaraagare Irakkaradu
Whoever is the children of God, the Lord is helping them
Ah, Priyamalve, Namakku Gudavu, Avar Uduvi Seeyavallava
Dear beloved, the Lord is able to help us also
Ah, Ungalay Enndand Kariyangeluke, Kathrud Thunaisseenun, Ninga Kasturukay
In what things do you expect the Lord to help you?
Avar Oru Manidaneke Thunaisseegaradu, Oru Nallu Oru Yedha Thunayaga Irakkaradu
He is a helper, a good help to the man
Ah, Purushanukke Manavi, Oru Yedha Thunay
The wife is a good mate to the husband
Madhey Vasanath, Apdithiruppono, ManaviKu Purushan, Oru Yedha Thunay
And the wife and husband is also a helpmate to the wife
Ah, Ettharavare, Apdhi, Oru Life Amanjirukkintolunga Bapav
How many of your life is based on this aspect? How many of the wives can say that my husband is a helpmate to me? How many husbands can say that my wife is a good helpmate and we are made for each other? On the wedding day, they will say like this. All those who can, all those invitees will say, if they are alike, that the God has ordained them. When it was a helpmate to Adam, they all caught with that word and it was not told that Eve was a helpmate to Adam. Some of them are not able to unitedly work with their helpmates. Half of them do not know the purpose for which they are wedded. They said and they got married. They showed and I said, "Okay." Yeah, I asked if I would ask her to marry, I said, "Okay." Then why are you wanting to marry again? You should be a helpmate to each other. It's not for one day. Not for one month. And to the last moment of life, the husband is a helpmate to the wife and wife is a helpmate to the husband. If one should be individually, if he should fall, won't to him, if they are two together, then one will lift him up. That is what the word of God says. In Ecclesiastes 4. It is good for you to be two together than to be alone. In verse 10, you see that when one should fall, the other will lift him up. Oh to the one who is falling alone, because there is no one to lift him up. Verse 12, we see that if one should come resisting him, then two of them can resist them. When there are failures or weaknesses and the wife, then the husband should go and stand forward to help her, that is why is the husband living. Some of them think it's wrong, others will take it wrong, they should go and help their wife, until this, they will not go help their wife and after that, they will sit and cry. You should not look to prestige in helping any family. It's wrong for you to go and help in the neighbor's house. If you go and wash the plate in the neighbor's house, it's wrong. If you should take the neighbor on your vehicle, it's wrong. There is no wrong in you taking your wife. There is no sin in you cleaning your house. You should not look into prestige in these things and make your life a question. But unto the upright, the Lord is a helper. If you are an upright in this religion at any situation, the Lord will be your helper. 417, the Lord helps me that I might fulfill my ministry. There was none standing on my side. All of them forsook me. But the Lord stood with me and he helped me to fulfill my ministry. I was delivered out of the mouth of line. The reason is, the Lord was with me. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. In this, he says, "First, Jacob, second, he called him as Israel, thirdly, he calls him as Cheshurun." Who is this new person? Who is this Cheshurun? This Jacob, the third stage of Cheshurun. Firstly, Jacob. Secondly, God is intervening with him and changing him as Israel. Thirdly, when his life is going on into perfection, he is formed as Cheshurun. Now his name is Cheshurun. The Lord who called him first, saw first as Jacob, secondly, one who chose him as Israel, now he is forming him as Cheshurun. I again repeat. Before we are saved, we are Jacob. After being saved, we are Israel. Nextly, when we go on to our perfection, we become as Cheshurun. Cheshurun means the righteous of the Lord. Not sufficient, a man has saved, he should become the righteous of the Lord. In another translation, he is pleasant. He is upright. He is pleasant. He is the one who has lived and has attained. See what glorious explanations are given to his name. Not sufficient, you are saved and you become a prayer warrior, in your life, you should become a righteous person. This is the plan of the people of God coming to the church. Not sufficient, a plant is being planted and it's growing. Not sufficient that it is bringing forth. It's needful for it to bear forth fruits. Isaiah, a Christian, a farmer, he sowed a lot of crops, he grew them well, he washed them well, he sowed them well, he gave them good crops. But we see in Isaiah that he says that he has planted a good vine and he chose the choicest vine and built in the towers and made winnifrys and he looked forward with it, but it brought forth wild grapes. Some of them think that Cheshurun is somebody else. This is the poetical name of Jacob, when a song is sung about Jacob, the word of God calls him as Cheshurun. This was what in the mind of the Lord. He actually changed this Jacob as Cheshurun. This was what running in the mind of God. In this church, you have to be a CEO or a Jerusalemer, that is the devil's plan. We are fallen, we were fallen in sin, but the Lord saved us and we should not be as well wishers or subscribers of this church, but you should be formed as Zion and Jerusalem of this church. Right, you are wedded and you have lost the vision of Zion, but your children should be turned as Zion. If your child has stumbled, at least he should leave us Jerusalem. At least his children should be turned as Zion. Do you only have the prophetical word which says that kings shall rise above from thee? It's not the promise for you which says that I and my children are found as miracles and Mount Zion. Are you not as Mary in the church? Are you not as Elizabeth in the church? Have you not changed as Abraham in the church? Is not kings arising or Zion arising from you? It's the time for you question yourself. My, oh Cheshurun whom I have chosen, do not fear. The hidden truth in this is, if you have changed as Cheshurun, then the Lord will cause the reverse to flow in the wide places. Cheshurun did not fear for I will pour out water in the dry ground. You've become a righteous person of the Lord and the spirit and the blessing will be poured upon you. The blessing of your children is hidden in the life of the parents. If the root is holy, the branch is also will be holy. If the first flower is holy, the whole of the lump also will be holy. If the head be right, everything will be right. The father and mother become Cheshurun and the outseed of this church will become as Cheshurun. Until you be as Jacob, then floods will not go upon your dry ground and blessing of the spirit of God will not be poured upon your seed. You might have been changed as Israel. You might have got a vision or a spirit of prayer and go about saying that you are praying, but do not think that there will be, your children will be blessed because of this and the spirit will not be poured upon them. Then crows of blessings will come upon this world. Satan said that you fall down and worship me and I will give you the blessings of this world, if you should worship him itself, he will make you a millionaire. When speaking to Sadhguru, they will say like this. "Wah." "You come?" "I will make you a great person in India." "I will make you a person who has spoken openly in the world." "Why are you dying in this mountains, full of ice, saying Jesus and Jesus?" "I will not make you a Jesus, but as a great person in this world." "I will make you a person who is called as Mahatma." And he said, "Get away Satan." And Satan standing says. "I gave you a chance." "You made no use of it." "In front of your eyes, you see that I will bring a person called Gandhi." "I will mean the person called Gandhi, he will become famous in India and in the world." "You have lost the choice," he said, "and when?" "It was after that came Gandhi." "One who was learning, he brought him and he brought him inside." "One who was studying in Africa was called by him." "I will make your father of the nation." "Which father do you want to become?" "Do you want the Mahatma of Gandhi or the Mahatmas of the saints?" When you read in Psalm 16. "Who is Mahatma?" "When you see the third verse." "And he said that my goodness is extended not to thee but to the saints that are on the earth and to the excellent in whom was all my delight." "It is the saints who are called as Mahatmas." "The Lord is blessing Israel." "All the envy in him has gone." "But his seed is becoming nothing." "Children are quarreling with each other." "One is telling one another." "One is putting another one in the pit." "One is saying, 'We'll kill him.'" "Levi and Simion are taking this thorn cutting." "Diana is roaming about and spoiling her name and her life." These are the evidences which take place after he became Israel. But it is this, the Lord is saying of Cheshurun. If you come to this church, you pray and you do some things and roaming about, it does not bring any blessing upon your children, if you become as Cheshurun, only then your inheritance will be blessed. The Lord wants to change your life as pleasant. The Lord wants to change you as a righteous person. The Lord wants to change you as an upright. The Lord wants to flourish you in your faith. The Lord delights you to replenish in your heart as your soulers. But you should become as Cheshurun. When you become as Cheshurun, when you become thirsty, the Lord will give you water. What is that thirst? Nextly, you will be thirst after God itself. Matthew 5:6, it is said, "Blessed are the ones who thirst after the wrath of righteousness, they will be filled." Psalm 42:2. "My soul is thirsting after the living God." The thirst after this world is gone and the luxury and the pleasantness of this world, the size of this world is gone and our soul is thirsting after the living God alone. Like this, when your life is becoming thirsty after God, then your dry land is becoming rivers. In the midst of talk, this is what the Lord do. He is pouring spirits upon that seed. Our children should none of them be without receiving the Holy Spirit. Whatever you effort you can take. You keep their children in the presence of God. Somehow, those children should be anointed. Parents should take more effort in making their heads of the kingdom of God. For that, you make your children to fast. If it is needful, you too fast. If it is needful, bring your children to the tarrying meeting and make them. Without anointing, your child cannot go to heaven. If you are not born of the spirit, you shall not enter the kingdom of God. The Lord says that I will pour my spirit upon your seed. Your children should become Nazrein. Your children should become like Elijah. Your children should become like Elijah. Your children should become like Deborah. Your children should become like Paul. The Lord promises that the youth will change as the Nazrein. If it is only one son, let us become like John the Baptist. Like this, you should have a thirst concerning your children, my child should stand on Zion and I, my should see from Jerusalem. Mary saw that her son is being crucified and her heart was grieved and this was the prophetical word that the sword shall go in your heart was the prophetical word. That same eyes is seeing him seated with the father on his throne. My son, my, my child should go and stand on Zion, I should see him from Jerusalem. How many of you with that vision had come into this religion? "I will pour my spirit upon thy seed." "Not just tongues." "But the spirit of our supplication." "But the spirit of grace." "It's not the spirit of fear, but the spirit which is clear understanding and class." When the spirit of truth comes, this leading this children in this, in all the truth. Wisdom, knowledge and the fear of God. Are you fearing God? Are your children fearing the servants of God? Is there the fear of God in them? Are they fearing the presence of God? Have you taught them as to how to be seated in the presence of God? Have you taught them as to how to dress in the presence of God? Have you given training to your children, asking them to kneeling down in the presence of God? Have you taught them as to how to go on with everybody? Living all this for the worldly knowledge, you spending your money and teaching them is of no use. Firstly, the Lord does not promise this blessing, but he is pouring his spirit. Firstly, the Lord does not promise this blessing but he is pouring his spirit. It is only secondly, he is giving his blessing. If he should pour out the blessing upon your seed firstly, he will just go on. He has learnt and he has got all the blessings of this world and he is not controlled by the you, nor be controlled by God. Firstly, he is pouring his spirit. Then in his life, when he has the attitude as to whatever he does, the Lord will be with him, then he is giving his blessing. Then however high he is, he will honor the Lord. Then whatever progression he is going to, he will not leave the Lord. The spirit within him will correct him and will chastise him and will take him in the right path. But what we are doing is receiving the blessings and giving to our children and finally he is not doubting them neither, he is coming to the church. The reason for your children or your family members not to be blessed is you have still not be changed as Cheshur. The spiritual and material needs and blessings of your children is based upon your growth of your spiritual life. You read about Elizabeth. They lived an exemplary life. They forward did the Lord do? The Lord made their hair as a great prophet. The Lord formed him as a great vessel in that he might baptize even Jesus. Those parents were like Cheshur. Their children were formed as a powerful prophet. Philip was a good man of God. He had four female children. There are so many who were suffering with one female child. If there are two girls, then he is gone. And yet three of them, what will happen in the family? But in the house of Philip were four female children. And all the four were virgins. And all the four were prophets. See how the father has formed these children. See how he has grown them. See what kind of vision he had about their children in his mind. Acts chapter twenty one verse nine. He had four young daughters who were virgins who did prophesy. And all the four daughters said that the Lord spoke like this and the word of God will come out. He had a generation who lived a spiritual life. Is your children praying? You have be gotten your children and they will come here, is your son seated in any of the seats in this church of God? Is he here or anywhere else, is he in the presence of God? Is your daughter seated in anywhere in the presence of God? If you be a Cheshur, then the Lord will pour out the spirit on your seed. Being saved is on one hand. Coming into spiritual angle is another hand. And going to the perfection that spiritual life and living as righteous person is most important. What is it told about Cheshur? Today although many of them are come spiritually in the church, many of them do not possess the divine character. And be aware that one who is standing should not fall. Don't say that he was standing, say that he was standing by grace. Some of them even after coming into this church to a higher standard of the spiritual life are stumbling. This is what happened to Cheshur in once. Chapter thirty two. Verse fifteen, the firstly Cheshur is introduced. It was in his life, at this point is taking place in his life. It is at this place, he is called as Cheshur. Deuteronomy chapter thirty two verse fifteen. It is in this song that he is called as Cheshur. In chapter thirty one, the last verse says that the words of this song. And the chapter thirty two is a song. And it's a song which says, give your own heavens. It is in this poem that in the fifteenth verse that Jacob is turned as Israel in his rest. Those of them who have come to this spiritual good standard itself have changed as carnal people or fleshly people. And the example of the New Testament is Galician church. And of that church is said that they have begun in the spirit. You who have begun in the spirit are wanting to end in the flesh. Where is the pleasantness which you had in the beginning? In the beginning, this Galician church was a good church. When it is the servants of God, it will look as God to them. They will give their own life. But now it's not so. When you read in Galician chapter four. It is said like this. Verse fifteen, it is said, where is then the blessedness, they will speak of. You would have plucked out your own eyes and have given to me. In verse fourteen, it is said, my temptation that was on my flesh despite not now rejected but received me as an angel of God even as Christ Jesus. You see how the Galician church looked at the servants of God. They beheld Paul or the servant of God as an angel of God as Christ Jesus. But now what is happening is they are beating against each other. The word of God says that if you should fight against one another in your flesh, then he shall die. In verse, chapter five verse seven. He did run well. But now what happened to you? Even those of them who have become as Cheshur, many of them are stumbling. The reason for this is. It is said about fatness. Cheshur. Cheshur waxed fat and grown thick and he is kicking. Now he is having a self-pride. He is having a pride saying I. He's got the pride saying I. Even the perfect angel of God who is created perfect, he was from that perfection going on to defeat. Psalm seventy three. Verse seven. We read about the fatness of the heart. Today because of cholesterol, many of them are dying. So many of them have fatness in eyes. Psalm seventy three verse seven, it said, their eyes stand out with fatness and look their heart with wish. When you read in Matthew chapter thirteen. What is told there? There it is said of fatness in heart. When you read in Matthew thirteen fifteen. What is told there? Their heart is waxed cross. Their heart is waxed with fatness or their hearts or their eyes is waxed with fatness and some of them are waxed like Cheshur and in their spiritual life they are going be, they are kicking like Cheshur. But what does the Lord do? He knocked out this Cheshur and he made him right. And the Lord began to reign over him. But you become like Cheshur, the Lord will not leave you, he will chastise you, he will rebuke you and will make you stand. When you read in Deuteronomy chapter thirty. Reading in Deuteronomy chapter thirty three verse five, what is told about Cheshur? Deuteronomy thirty three five. He was a king in Cheshur. In your life, it is he who should reign over you. In your life, in your ministry, in your prayer, in your faith life, in all your life, in your going and in your coming and he should reign as king. If you be as Cheshur, then he is your king. He will control your business. He will control your business. And he will program your, he will schedule your program. And he will do your ministry. One servant of God says. In the beginning, I did the ministry. And after a few days, he says that I and God unitedly did the ministry. Now after he's become aged, he says that I am not doing the ministry but he is doing the ministry. This is a divine expedient. When we become like Cheshur and God will be like a king to him. How many of your Jacob here on this meeting? How many of you are seated like Israel here? These both seats are failure seats. Jacob and Israel are defeated members. But Cheshur. It is to Cheshur that the Lord is coming. It is not for Jacob that Jesus is coming. Jesus has not come to Israel. Literally you see that Jesus is not going to come back for Israel but for the church. It's not for Jacob in the church. It's not for Israel in the church. Even in this church, if you are Cheshur, then the Lord is coming in the sky. When you read in Deuteronomy chapter thirty three verse. Who is the Lord coming in the sky? Deuteronomy thirty three twenty six. Who is Jesus coming up? He is coming with the sound of the trump and with the sound of the archangels, whom is he coming for in the sky? What is the secret of him coming with the trump of the and with the sound of the archangels? Is he coming to gather the Jacob in the church? Is he coming and to gather the ones who are grieving the others and the deserving brothers? Or is Jesus coming to the ones who are praying and receiving the earthly blessings? All those who live accordingly, life will be persecuted and to the ones who are living a life of full persecution in this world and to them who will, who are living like Cheshur in this world, the Lord Jesus is coming in the mid skies. There is nobody else like the God of Cheshur. Now there is no address of Jacob. Jacob is dead. Israel is destroyed. Now with Cheshur, no standing. The pride, the spiritual pride and the material, will only pride of, from me you should go. He is not coming from all of them in the church but whoever is turned as Cheshur in the church, only to them he is coming. Those who have become the righteous of God. Those who have become righteous by the blood. Those who have become righteous by faith. Those who have become righteous by calling. Those who have become righteous by confession. Those who have changed as righteous by God. Those who are turned as righteous by their work. Only to such people who are righteous, the Lord is coming. Only the righteous are being caught up. That is why prophetical eyes are fixed that the righteous are caught up. And there is no one to consider in his mind. To whom is Jesus coming? There is no address of Jacob at all. And Jacob is hidden. Israeli is hidden. The one who is abiding is Cheshur. It is for Cheshur that Jesus is coming in the skies. See when is this prophecy? This prophecy is for us. That he might help you. In the sky. And with this excellency, he is riding on the skies. Whom is he coming for? He is coming to Cheshur. Only to the ones who are turned as Cheshur, the coming of the Lord will be a blessing and it will be a place of uniting even the Lord. If you become like Cheshur, then your seed will be blessed by the spirit. If you become like Cheshur, your seed will be blessed. If so, then close your eyes in the presence of the Lord. Understand this, that Jesus is not coming for Jacob or Israel, he is coming only for Cheshur. He is the one who has formed. He has created us. And today he is there to help you and he is with you. If you were Jacob. He changed you as Israel. And now the Lord is forming you as Cheshur. How many of you want to be changed as Cheshur? When you are changed as Cheshur, it is for you that the Lord is coming in the skies and you will hear the trumpet sound. Although some want to become like Cheshur, close your eyes and kneel down. It is the time for us to humble for a moment. For some moments, let us throw away our weakness and kneel down and look into the Lord. Do not fear. Oh Cheshur, do not fear. For I have formed you. I have created you. And I will be with you. I will help you till the end. You were Jacob. I changed you as Israel. And sure, I am changing you as Cheshur. Your seed will be blessed. Your seed will be anointed. Your dry ground will flood with water. Although some believe that the Lord is telling like this, close your eyes and kneel down. For some moments, let us look out to heaven. Lord, you changed me as Cheshur. You have changed me so much but I have waxed false hat and I have grieved you and I have kicked you and I have lost the rock which you have found me. And he is accused that he has forgotten the rock which is the Lord. Let's all lift up our heads. If possible for you to kneel down and close the eyes, it's not wrong. The Lord is coming in our midst to meet people who are Cheshur. Today's message is Jacob being turned to Israel. And Israel being changed to Cheshur. And to the ones who are Cheshur, the Lord is speaking. And the Lord is striving to change you as Cheshur. How many of you say that Lord changed me as Jeshurun lift your hands? When you should come I should stand as Jeshurun. Enough for the days that I lead as Jacob. Enough for the days that I lead as a deceiver. Enough for the days that I deceived and lived. Enough for the days that I have justified that I have rightly gained my blessing. Even if you have justly lived, you have lived for the blessing of this world. You are praying for your seed but have you prayed that your generation should become a Zion in Jerusalem? You pray for your children, Lord if you should give me a child, I will form him as Zion. All those who have children yes we pray saying, Lord I give my son into your hands that he might become as Zion. When I come to heaven, I want to see my child standing on Zion with you. This wife of Zebedee says that my two sons if they should stand one on the left and right on the throne of God that is sufficient, I do not want anything else. How many of you desire our children to be spiritual? Then you become a Jeshurun. Brother sister become as Jeshurun. If you become a Jeshurun. The Lord will be as king. He will reign over you. Everything will exist in his hand. It is for Jeshurun that Jesus is coming. For Jeshurun Jesus is coming in the skies.